Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there, um, are you from this area or near this area, Silas?
No, 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 no. The Disneyland is built in, um, an island.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Another island.
Looks swampy.
Real. Them with their islands of swamp.
Yeah, it looks like they drained it.
Uh huh.
Which is what they didn't Florida.
I'm getting like disproportionate masculine to feminine energy here. And that's somewhere ethically, this is bleeding into the rest of the world in terms of.
Doesn't it look like blood? Like that got cut off at the neck.
Yeah.
Bleeding.
Sure does.
You can't, oh my gosh, you can't make this stuff up.
And what is that on the, the top right portion of the island that, that's pyramidal? Some kind of parking structure?
This area here?
Thing Bay, yeah, look at that.
Oh, that, that is shit. That, that is the, um.
Holy.
When, when people are.
Looks like an octagon.
Quarantine, quarantine center isolation camp.
What?
Oh my god.
For the, for the, for the positive PCR test.
Oh, okay, right by Disneyland, really?
This is.
Silas, finish describing it, please. Sorry, Silas, please go ahead. I really want to hear you.
Like, like there are some shit going on there. Like, people are getting crazy within that site. We can see on the news, you know, they, they are stuck inside and people, uh, the, the people are not letting them go.
This is making me feel sick.
Yeah, me too. I'm getting dizzy.
Hmm.
But that's okay. We need to look at. That's horrible.
Or your methods.
I feel, I feel they're harvesting the energy.
That's what I was just thinking.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right. You're right.
Yeah.
It's a massive force being pulled.
And the fear, the fear and the, uh, they're pulling off of the fear. And torture.
Well, that's why we need to get some swords in here. And we need to cut the fear. But this is why I said it felt stagnant, like, like they're stuck.
Yeah.
Well, hello, they're stuck there.
They can't go, yeah.
Yeah.
What kind of a physical structure is it? Are they, are they units or?
That's what it looks like.
Apartments, uh, Silas?
Silas, what is, what is this we're seeing? Are these like buildings?
Uh, like cargo ships. They build some rooms. Yeah, they, they build some rooms for people.
Oh, jeez.
That's like a zombie test site.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna bring in some, uh, energy from Madagascar and the Tree of Life and Artemis. And the lotus flower for that area.
Okay.
Who else is in this group?
Is it me, Silas, and Nikki?
Yes. And Christopher.
I'm in it too, yeah.
Christopher. Anybody got a sword?
And Dave, and Dave.
Anybody got a sword?
I am seeing.
Right here.
Marcus also has a sword.
I'm seeing some AI technologies surrounding the, uh, quarantine center.
This be AI surveillance? So like automated surveillance?
And embedded into the units.
Yeah.
Should we attempt at dismantling this energy?
I'm putting my Sword of Light right through it.
And they're, they're like implanting some AI technologies into the people that are inside. Through the regular way.
This is a harve- harvesting site for hybridization for the future.
Yeah, they're testing it. Mm hmm. And he is the king, he's actually the king of communication. That's, but, um, I'm looking at it, at his sword, is, he's carrying the Sword of Truth. So, um, but it looks like what you're saying, the AI, they, they're using, they're testing the communication there. And these people are literally stuck. They cannot leave.
I just got a Queen of Swords out of my deck.
Yeah.
And we, can we dismantle the, um, the part of the AI? The AI part? Because if you don't get the head.
Yeah, that's what I was seeing too, that this is the head of the fallen dragon. So this is where the, the silver blood, the silver blood's running.
Chop it off.
If you look at the way this, this, there's a, there's a triangular parking lot on the left. And the, there's a green space and it looks like an eye. If you look like, it looks like the head of a dog.
Yeah.
That whole parking lot. It almost looks like an Egyptian dog, like they would have.
Oh my god, I just, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not muted. Like, let me mute myself.
Do you, but do you see what I mean? It looks like something almost Egyptian, um, from a higher view.
Yeah, and I keep seeing that this is affecting throat chakra collectively. I don't know if anybody's feeling that in the throat, but.
Absolutely.
It's been hard to swallow. It's been almost hard for me to speak, actually, the whole time we've been here.
Yeah, and the emotions are running really high for the suffering those people are going through right there.
Can we get some light language again in this area to, um, I, I just feel like the Sword of Truth needs to be broadcasted.
Christopher, you're group four on this one? For the light language?
You got it, you got it. Opening my heart. Shosimbiyan yana hat shodama koi shasa vitwa kua la mut shasa i sha ni ka kua. Kua le bitwa susha pa kua le bitwa nuwa kua. Kai shata doani ta 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 wa no kush. La bit shasa wa shasa sa wa. Ta yushya ma kua pa kula ma tui shetitia. Ma tui ma kua la mishaa. Yorion boi shoto. Boyon niro va her suto. Hamu tui shua eda edo kua ba. Ma yor le mea kua. Waleo busho. Yorobion de me kua kuli to. Waleo no ma kua 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 ma yor kua shura no ma kua kua. Ya shawa shata ma kua kua. Wa shah sah kua.
Wow, I felt that.
Yeah, are you okay?
Yeah, whoa.
I, as soon as you, right before you stopped, I felt your energy penetrate layers in the fields there. And then it was like you became a little unbalanced, like right as that happened.
Yeah, and I could, the, the thing is too, is I could keep going, but I didn't, I wasn't sure, like, if I did this for three or four minutes, if that was appropriate or not for the group. But if you want me, I can, I can continue until I feel like a settlement of it.
Yeah, when it, whenever you feel naturally.
Yeah, I felt that though.
Yeah.
Shosho nia. Shata vea kua. Chabadoa kua le bitwa shunika. Shangnia pa kua. La ryo sho. Ya da, mi shoto. Yet ya no ma kua kua le bitwa ta shodo ba kua to shoto pa. Ah la pu to bi shodo mi. Ma kua shodama kua le bitwa shodo bi. Ma lo bo shone me kua kua kuliata. Ya la bitu shari yada kala ma kua sta do ba. Pa kua la musha pa la kia sa. Ya la ba kua shudo ba kia to bu ya la bu. Ya la bu shasa wa sa. Wa shu sa siya so. Shososa. Ya shosia ta. Ma ya pa doa shodo bi ta. Yor yobo shola me kua ba kua le bitwa sholo ba kua shodo bi kua kua. Ya la e shodo bi shata woli kia ta kua ha. Ya kua he shiu. Shasa sa, 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 sa. Shosho su suhi. Sha. Lo pi so ba. Yo no me ta ya shio. Yor yobo du shio. Pa lo pi shodo bi ta. Ah li o to bi kia te yas to no me te diya da wa. Yo shodo ba kua la bitwa. Pa kua la bitwa da ba kua la tu es to duch. Sa siya tu la su la kua kua. Wa shu la me kua i ta me kua shodo ba kua eto eh. Ya sti bi shola. Ya la bitwa shita ba kua. Pa kua le bitwa ti sa. Ya sti bi shia. Whish. 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 Shasa sa, shasa sa, sa so so. Ya sa ta kua kia. Kia kua kuki. Shato ducha. Wa i shasa wa. Pa ya.
Wow.
Yeah. I keep feeling throat, throat chakra clearing.
This is a note, something that, that, um, really came to me as he was speaking is, when somebody's doing a transmission like that, I think for those who recalled, it's good to lend that person your energy and certainly your defense, because there's gonna be fun to any attacks gonna be directed at. Cause clearly he was getting a lot coming back at him.
I, I actually felt the attack earlier when, or whatever that was, um, and I, Teresa, I saw you, uh, crying there a little bit of tears and that was kinda happening.
Yeah, I felt like, I, I felt like I could understand him. It was, wow, that was powerful. And I wanted, I wanted to do, I don't know why I wanted to do that, but I didn't want to disrupt him. I almost wanted to mute, something was telling me to.
Yeah, sometimes like I'll do stuff like that and I'll snap and.
Yeah.
I could feel myself breaking up.
I mean, I, I was like, right, I was in sync with you. I was like, whoa. I felt like I understood everything you said.
Called to do, I went, shh. You should have done it. You were sitting. Yeah.
And just go ahead and start to, uh, bring ourselves down into the gate system here. And you can, uh, let us all know what you start to see as you come down into this gate site. So pay attention to what you are starting to see, hear and feel the atmosphere as you are going through somewhat of a remote view and a bilocation experience.
I see tons of bodies, um, at the, at the core of that, uh, that site. I also see a portal or a Stargate, a portal actually opening up. I see Hathor there. I see, uh, the Divine Mothers, uh, there. And I'm now running the, um, I'm running the Sword of Light and being prompted to run the, um, the Ankh now. I see tons, tons of people, bodies, all the way at the, at the bottom.
Are these light bodies or are these astral bodies? What are these bodies?
It, it's, it's a, um, I'm getting a vision of just bodies over dead bodies.
Okay. Yep.
Piles of them.
Okay, so let's go ahead and run the, uh, Tribal Shield. Okay, and so that way we can do, uh, a shield and protect our astral field and also assist with sweeping, kinda like a guardian sweep to, uh, maybe assist those souls with, um, moving through the Bardo planes. It sounds like we're actually starting to open up to like a Bardo experience here. So I'm gonna go ahead and count down for the Tribal Shield, one.
Two.
Three. Four.
Five.
Six.
Seven.
Seven.
Eight. Nine.
Ten.
Eleven. Twelve.
Okay. Well, it's interesting, we're getting a lot of interference around seven, eight, and nine. So I think we need to pay attention to that.
I was mute. I was muted, sorry.
It's okay.
I'm, I'm still speaking nine and not being heard.
Um, I don't know if I'm calling this out right. Guardian Sweep and, and, uh, we could probably use some of Atrial's light language now.
Guardian Sweep.
Guardian Sweep, Atrial.
Onakatiya siin ka i. Kaniasia tinu i aneshia ndakiya tayana. Sanakoya katia liano ko shkia nesia adia i. Nashka skiana koliyana kishke ya to shkia nasia tayi izkanoya. Ashtiaka sia niya tayiga. Nokota niya sia ya. Tarion opa ri shkuniya taaskiota. Monakatiya la pinshkia sko. Karanakiota moskina suya nata.
Antonia, do you wanna do the Guardian Key to call them the Four Pillars of Man?
When we stand in the circle with the Four Pillars of Man, we stand in the truth of God's divine plan. We now stand as builders, architects, wisdom keepers, and truth seekers of the earth to open the gates of the land, ready to be revealed. North, south, east, west, below and above. We now set the Merkaba at our feet as the key to open the gates of the land for restoration. What is our truth will be our, our future and we call that to us to be open now. See each point of the Merkaba light up as we count. Twelve.
Eleven.
Ten.
Nine.
Eight.
Eight. Seven. Six.
Five.
Four. Three.
Two.
One. That was beautiful. So I see, I see a deep portal here, uh, in the Well of Souls. So underneath this gate site, there's a, there's like a golden sphere underneath the Temple Mount. And it's a portal that seems to open up to Nibiro.
I see a ship.
Does anybody see, uh, I see twelve guardians? Guardians of the portal? With courting.
Where do the, where do the cords go to?
Going through the bodies to the portal. I'm seeing something that they're all, uh, the guardians are gagged, the, the, that there's truth here to be released.
Okay.
I keep seeing, uh, clockwork, like, uh, parts of a clock when he was talking. So I feel like it has something to do with time.
Yeah, like fractures in time or something like, um, messed up coordinates or something.
And trying to like, uh, tie on to specific times or lock those times in.
I'm also seeing, um, tunnels and those tunnels are those, uh, paths of light going directly into the pyramids of Egypt. Something that ties into this, uh, location.
So we need to clear the, the passages to Egypt, to the pyramid.
And we bring that forward now.
Yeah.
We open, we call an opening of those light, uh, pathways to be open now. Guardian Sweep.
I'm gonna call in the Chris.
I see an inner earth light network assisting us now. Opening, there's not only one pathway, there's actually, uh, multiple pathways going from Egypt or the pyramids all the way to the dome.
I see open passageways also to the Stargate of Aden as well. And those ones are really, really blocked.
We're getting a communication from the Inner Earth Light Network now. They're communicating with us and they're assisting us.
I saw a golden key being given.
Open.
I keep seeing that we need to all actually, uh, remove those gag, the gag that's on those twelve guardians. And we need to allow them to pass through the Golden Gate.
Yeah, it'll also might be on your nose.
So I have, I have my Sword of Light that'll go ahead and remove the gag, I'll cut off the, the gags. Let's do a countdown. How many are there?
Oh.
All right, let's do it.
Eleven.
Ten.
Nine.
Eight.
Seven. Six.
Five.
Four. Three.
Two.
One. I'd like to request the Core Fear Matrix Removal Program be released. I would like to request a general clearing of all fear-based programs that are hindering all spiritual growth and ascension at this location. And I'd like to ask that the astral field is expanded in silver, blue, and emerald light. Okay. Any and all fears that you see come up at this time, request that they be removed from all identities, all guardians, all partnerships, all coalitions, specifically to the Kristos Masters, and remove them here at this location.
And in all timelines and in all dimensions.
To stop the, the, the use and the connection with the, with the, with the memory of, uh, the living being, like rocks, but also like, I get like a medicine plant. So, um, so with this plant, the originally was, was, uh, uh, this plants, uh, the originally was used for the expansion of the, of the consciousness. Now they are just like a trap in the system of, they are gridding. They are just like, uh, they are holding a very distorted geometry. And, um, and I, and yeah, I just had the pic of, uh, um, you know, what is the, how look like the distorted geometry? And, uh, and, uh, they, they use a tetrahedron, but distorted. And then, and then I just remove it. I tried to remove it to see what is the original blueprint, blueprint to bring back the, 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 the frequency of, uh, source pure creation, where there is no control over the consciousness of plants, of, um, people. And, uh, and, uh, you know, um, organic and inorganic beings, it come, it come in my mind. And then the, the geometry cha- change is a, is a sha- is a, is a shape of a radiant sun with a hole, with a big hole. They go in, they go inside.
Indy, can you go out a little bit? Or like, a little further? Okay. All right, we went too far. Go, go back in. I'm seeing some sort of a bird or some sort of a, um, um, like that, where the, where the blue balloon thing is, that looks to me like the, the head of a bird. And then I looked up, cause I wasn't sure, is that, is that the name of Machu Picchu? I wasn't sure what the name meant. But the name meant Sanctuary of the Virgins of the Sun. And it's funny, Moira was just talking about the sun. But this is what it mean, it's supposed to be the Sanctuary of the Virgins of the sun. But I don't know why I was seeing, I don't, does anybody else see what I'm seeing? It just looks almost like a pterodactyl or some kind of bird thing.
Yep.
Hmm, yeah, I see that as well.
Yep. I think it's really interesting, this really crazy windy road all the way to get up there.
That to me is kinda like the wings, like if you spread out the wing like it's flying or something, but.
Yes, that's what I see.
So I, I don't know if this energy has something to do with the, um, like being on the wings of this bird and, and this area. Cause virgins and the sun, like, what the heck does, how does that come together here?
Well, as soon as you're saying that, I was thinking of a double virgin birth. There's something called a double virgin birth that this medicine woman that I was listening to earlier was talking about, that the Incan, so that you say that, it's interesting, cause she's saying that the Incan would practice double virgin birthing, which goes back to, um, souls coming in without any karma. Like this is how souls can come in without any karma. And it's super important that these, um, double virgin births were done, um, through purity and through, you know, full-on connecting with spirit, like they would actually take the birthing process really serious. And that we have to actually restore, actually what has to be restored to anchor in like the new age grids and templates fully and to reconnect. We're not supposed to separate the timelines anymore. We're supposed to reconnect the grid structures through light and just repair what was separated or what was dissolved or what was broken. And to take those information seeds into the next timeline, because they're all fragmented in particular timeline sets that can't access other grid networks. Like that information is not transmitting over here.
Well, they've got a interesting history on this area, because I, I don't know if it was thought of to be good at one time. But it seems to be, like I said, the virgin of this, the virgins of the sun. And then it says, "A large portion of the bones and the graves found at the site were erroneously identified as female." So there's, there's a lot of females that, I don't know if this is a sacrificial type of thing.
Wow, 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 okay.
It'd have been a sacrificial, like, uh, a route that they walked, a death march or something that they were forced to march down.
Yeah, to get there.
And, uh, and all this shape of the wings that you guys identify is just like the halfway. It's just like keeping alive only the half hole. So the sacrifice is just like to make sure that there is, there is not the, the, the hole of, um, the, the sovereignty code that come through. And before, when I was seeing all this geometry, we're just like, um, seeing then, um, then, uh, was something to do with the Ritalian. Uh, all this geometry has been installed in the Ritalian brain. So the program is running on this frequency, on the, on this, um, geometry. And when I saw the, 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 the new geometry, the one that can restore, that is more like, uh, a Stargate, a sun with a lot of ray. It, that is what has been hidden, because, um, if we tap into that, then we can restore the whole, not the half. Yeah.
It's almost as if all of the forced breeding memory fields, like all of the suppression of the trauma is like held in like fractal seed codes in the land here. Like, is that what you're seeing in this geometry? Cause that's what I was picking up on as you were saying it.
It's a very concentrated, if they were to have done human sacrifice on that entire kind of back and forth, you know, it's almost like a, you know, if you were to look at a, um, wha- what do they call it? Would they do a polygraph, a polygraph or whatever? And the needle kinda jumps up and down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You turn it sideways, you know, um, but if they were to have ma- a mass sacrifice, that's a very concentrated way of doing it. It's not just linear, it's wrapping it multiple times in one area. Even a circle is only a fraction, if you were just to do a circle over that whole area. So that's a concentrated darkness that there, there must be something there.
I keep seeing an X, like an X.
Yeah, yeah, there must be something there that they were trying to neutralize, um, and, and transmute into darkness.
Why do I get Disneyland?
Right.
Standing in line at a freaking Disneyland.
That's what I saw. That's what I saw, the corraling.
I mean, is that what they're doing to a? I mean, is that what they're doing to us when we're standing in line, trying to, you know, get that feeling of
I saw that one.
Stress.
Yeah, they put up those shields too, the Plexiglas shields during the COVID. And it was literally like these animal shoots that they run the cattle down. And then when they get to the end, they kill. And I'm like, this is a mass sacrifice event.
You just don't know it, right?
But they're going to be using it. Well, I think that they're going to be using it. Their intention is to use those sites for mass sacrifice.
Probably.
Because it can move a lot of people.
It does look like it's ushering somebody to go.
It's really important that we speak what we're wanting.
Yeah, you're right. You're right.
I, I'm getting energy to do with the umbilical cord, the umbilicus, and the connection to the placenta. And the, the, cutting it in to deplete the life force. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's like, almost like, um, it's, it's like, if the cord is cut too soon, then we don't get all the nourishment. Right? And we want to return, we want to restore that. Because I, like, I, it's, it's like an implant in the umbilicus. Like, it's like an umbilical implant.
It's like a, it's like a predatory, it's like a predatory field that comes in.
If you look on the left side where it says Unbamba River, it looks like an umbilical cord cut there.
Yeah, that's what I, as soon as we came into this area, that's exactly, I just felt just like such a heaviness right on the umbilicus.
Okay.
It's like that, that, it's really important that we get into the frequency of unconditional love, Divine Mother, because everything is loved at that level. Everything is transcended and muted, and everything is loved. And we want to just bring in that frequency of the divine feminine
Oh, y'all.
Frequency of right, source love, that source, and the love of just creation, a lot of creation, the love of, of, for all mothers' creations. Right? And that mother doesn't see in dark and black and white, like darkness. Because just that frequency of knowing, right? This is really important that we actually all come back to the art right now because like yeah, we want to bring back that.
To do our transport into Egypt. Okay, so just similarly how we just inducted those symbol codes, we're going to induct the octagonal geometry, because this one is key-coded to Egypt. So we're going to take a little journey into the Sphinx. And we're going to activate the blue flame there and just see what we can see in Egypt. But we're going to use this to basically do our bilocation or our remote viewing. And you guys can look at this diagram here. What this represents is the geometry that's running in the Stargate system in Giza, Egypt itself. So this is actually a pyramidal viewpoint looking down on Egypt. We have the three pyramids and you have the Sphinx over to the side. And the Stargate vortex actually runs as an inverted triangle right there in the center of that area. It's the fourth, fourth Stargate in the world, and it's the largest Stargate in the world. And it's celestial and encoded to a lot of different systems, Orion, Lyra, Draco, it's, it's encoded to a lot of systems, Regulus. But that's, but if you feel those energies come in, that's, that's totally fine. That's okay. But we're going to focus on just using this symbol code to access this part of the grid. Okay? So everyone basically just wants to do, bring up your pillar of light. So your pillar of light should go all the way through your chakra system, all the way into the grand central sun. We're going to use the sun to merge our energy together as one. Okay? And you're going to take a nice deep inhale. You're going to bring the octagonal symbol code into your third eye. You turn it into a horizontal plane. You can actually run it down your pillar if you'd like to and bring it back up. And then at the same time, I'm going to count down from three, and we're all going to send the symbol code into the sun. Okay? So, three, two, one. And just begin to send your octagonal geometry into the solar sun. We're all going to merge and sync our energies together in the sun. And as we come through, we're going to push our energy through that solar sun and bring yourself out on the other side of the sun. You should be looking down over the pyramidal vortex in Giza, Egypt. So really allow yourself to visualize those structures below you, accessing it astrally and ethically. And you want to bring that symbol code as you push it through the sun and we're all merged together. You're going to bring that symbol code down into the vortex in Giza, Egypt. And you can use this picture to kind of visualize that energy. And just really visualize yourself coming down into the Stargate. Okay? So we'll use the map to kind of continue to navigate. And as everybody comes down into the Giza complex, does anyone start to see anything here? Ethically, astrally, visually, spiritually? I'm feeling called that as a group that we should all go into the Giza complex, into the temples, and kind of anoint and initiate ourselves. I see the gates and the doorways being open to go underneath into the Sphinx itself. I keep hearing HRL.
I'm seeing a white lion.
Is the presence of the white lion expanded over the Stargate itself? Is it like larger than life?
Um, it, it's really like in a different dimension. But yes, over lapping the, the Stargate area that I saw on your map.
Okay, is anyone else tuning into the white lion?
I'm healing, I'm hearing the Hall of Records. Yeah, I'm seeing a lot of information here, but it's contained in water.
I was just seeing a waterfall.
It's almost as if the, and it's almost as if it's underwater as well. I'm seeing like this whole area underwater and that there's a flame that's burning underneath the water. Underneath the Sphinx, that, that soon's all going to be underwater. And the waters are having a lot to do with us moving this energy tonight and expanding out the dove grid. Like there's a purification process that's supposed to happen through the waters.
I actually see the dove energy coming in. And it's like a purification light coming into this zero point. Almost like funnel. It's like a funnel, but it expands out. It's purifying this point.
It's, it's like the energy has shifted here since the last time I've been here. But I almost feel like I'm guided to take everybody in the Sphinx, that everybody here is supposed to anoint themselves in the blue flame and is supposed to activate themselves with the codes of the Hall of Records as a group. And that we're supposed to do the twelve tribal shield here to start activating the dove grid.
I actually see us forming into the circle in the, in one of the tunnels. There's a space.
I see it too, around the blue flame.
Uh, yes, and so we're already there. So this is, this is underground.
Can anyone else see this?
Yes, I can too. I can too.
And see the blue flame.
I want everybody to hold their hands out in front of them and actually visualize and feel yourself holding the blue flame. Feel that burning in your hands. I'm going to start the tribal round. One.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four. Five. Six.
Seven.
Eight.
Nine.
Ten.
Eleven.
Twelve.
Twelve. And now I'm seeing more white coming in, more white light. Sort of mixing with the, the blue flame.
Yeah, I can see that too.
And now the blue flame is white. This is the white flame of the dove.
So I'm being guided that we're all supposed to encode this into our hearts, into our minds, into our souls, into our spirits. And we're supposed to know that we are the ones that are being guided from this point forward to activate this flame and to activate this grid that we're now carrying this matrix within us. I feel as if we're supposed to go to another location that's associated to the white lion. Jerusalem came to me.
I just heard Russia, but I don't know where.
Oh, my goodness. Do you think Kazakhstan? Like we need to take the dove energy to where the war is?
I think it had something to do with the white lion. I don't know if there's any significance to Russia and a white lion.
Oh, and is Russia a part of the white lion grid?
Not that I know of. I would think Scotland.
The grids can change and shift too. This might be grid expansion.
Okay.
I feel like the, I'm seeing us actually within the white lion and entering those places through the mouth of the lion. I'm seeing the, the white lion as the portal.
So we're all supposed to go into the portal of the white lion and expand to those particular locations. Russia, Kazakhstan, Scotland, Jerusalem. So the dove, the dove is supposed to come through the white lion. That, that's a protection or that's a shield for the dove to then enter into the.